Seven PM appears to have arrived. Therefore, I would request the council to come to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ammons?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. I now would request approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, would all those in favor of the motion please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public input. And I have just one public input card from Mr. Terry Townsend, and we're happy to hear from you now.
Good evening.
Hey.
My time limit is, what, three, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Terry Townsend, 2806 Rachel Champagne. I'm a retired Housing Authority Commissioner, and tonight I am going to address you as a former Housing Commissioner. I have before me the Federal Register, and my topic will be student homelessness, K-12 student homelessness in particular. The 1974 Gonzales National Affordable Housing Act requires that the action plan of your consolidated plan, and I quote from the Federal Register, describe how the plan will address housing and homeless needs. I've talked to Ms. Tyler and a few others, and what I got from them was that your consolidated plan and your action plan, you address homelessness in general, but you do not address K-12 student homelessness. I also work with the School Board of Urbana-Champaign and other area at school boards. I have their support. I have the support of the Federal Regional Office in Chicago, HUD, in about what I'm about to say. I am not a member of any of those districts in that I'm not representing them today. This, I'm gonna read you a letter, and then after I read you a letter, I'm gonna make a comment. This letter is dated May 8, 2017. It is to Dr. Benjamin Carson, Secretary of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Dear Secretary Carson, the Champagne School District 4 and Urbana School District 116 Board of Education have specifically requested that the City of Champagne and the City of Urbana address K-12 student homelessness. The media have repeatedly run stories about K-12 student homelessness. An elected official recently stated publicly, Champagne Councilperson, "Student homelessness is not new," and she is correct. Yet our review of the City of Champagne and the City of Urbana's 2015 through 2019 action plans do not address K-12 student homelessness as a critical need, nor does either plan direct funds to address student homelessness. On May 2, 2017, the City of Champagne voted on their 2017-18 action plan. Fifteen days before the statutory deadline to submit documents to HUD, Council Bill 2017-099 was approved with no amendments added to address student homelessness in the twin cities of Champagne and Urbana. Consolidated plans and corresponding action plans are basic documents to identify the use of city funds received from the federal government. The City of Champagne 2017-2018 Annual Action Plan identifies primarily neighborhood revitalization and real property development as ongoing targets for the use of federal fund. However, the Annual Action Plan is problematic in the following ways. It fails to list specific objectives, and the linkage between prior priority spending and homelessness is not clear. I'm going to move to the recommendation page. Here is the recommendations to Secretary, to the Secretary of HUD. Do not fund the City of Champagne and the City of Urbana CDBG or home requests until these communities spend federal funds. Prioritize community needs consistent with the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. Lastly, we are aware of presidential proposals to eliminate the funding for housing and community development programs. We make no comment on that issue, but we know massive amounts of federal and state funds are being spent on real property development and social engineering in Champagne County. Simultaneously, our children are homeless, this is unacceptable. I signed this as a former officer of the Champagne County Housing Authority, and Martell Miller, community activist, also signed this letter. In opposing your application, I am certain of one thing. We have, we probably won't have, get the federal government to eliminate your funds. You are fully aware that there are complaints nationwide that cities are not using those funds in an appropriate way. Dallas, for example, uses the funds to hire building inspectors. There are a whole lot of examples out there, and you know them as well as I do. It is not my intent to pick a fight with you or with the City of Champagne. This is not a partisan issue. This is not a race issue. This is about our children. This is about our children, and none of our children should be sleeping in trucks or in overcrowded conditions in this county. We have far too much money to allow that to happen. Lastly, I'll be traveling to Chicago to lobby against your application. This has not been done because I have something against you or because I just started thinking about this. We have tried. Both Urbana School Board has passed a resolution, Champagne School Board passed a resolution, sent them to the cities, and they were pretty much ignored. I talked to the federal government, the Regional Office and HUD Central in Washington, and they said, "It's an excellent idea. They should have student homelessness identified as a community need." You don't. And you have not, like Champagne, you have not dedicated any funds towards that. The state is now geared up to start looking at student homelessness. House Bill 261 has left the House, it's over in the Senate now for second reading. We expect action from the state. This is part one of a two kind of leg strategy. I'm sure, once you realize this, you'll start conversations with the school districts, and we can work this out. The second part of this is gonna be much more difficult, because I'm gonna ask of you something very, very difficult, and of local government, and it involves transformational change. We can address homelessness in a way that will be effective and reduce it significantly in this county. It requires us to think out of the box. It requires us to forget about all these partisan labels and all this other nonsense that we have when our people are suffering. If there's anything that I can do to facilitate your relationship with the school boards, I'd be more than happy to. However, I think that's something that they should do with you. And if you have any questions of me, I'll answer those questions. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Brown and Mayor?
I know one of the ways we get our priorities established is through the continuum of care at the RPC, and I think the schools have representatives on that as well as the cities. Have you been there to talk with them, and have they identified this as a priority?
Councilman Brown, I have talked to many members of that group. I think they're doing an excellent job. Somehow, student homelessness is not listed anywhere. As you know, some of the members of Urbana School District are members of that group. Some of your staff is members of that group. Still, it's not listed. If you take your 2015 and 2019 consolidated plan and look at that, and then go back, like I did, I came over and spent a couple hours, and then look at your action plans. Those action plans that you vote on, they don't address it. Ms. Tyler said, "Yes, Terry, you're right. We address homelessness in general, but when it comes to student homelessness, we have not done that." So you would think it would be real simple for them just to put it in the plan and suggest, you know, here's some strategies that we can partner with the school district on. It's not there.
Just as a follow-up, so in part of our homelessness funding, we, well, we used to support Roundhouse, which probably could be a student homeless, but like tenant-based rental assistance we do, and some of those people no doubt have students, and so that would help them, but you're trying to, I guess, yeah, we would, I would need help trying to figure out exactly how you target students particularly?
I think that's something that you guys need to do. You need to sit down with the school boards and say, okay, what are your needs, just like state representatives are doing across the state now? How can we partner and come up with something? I'm aware of that. I'm aware of past fundings, and I think that programmatically, the state is trying to look at transportation. Perhaps the city can help the school district with transportation. I think, I think you can work out something, but I think you need to start the conversation. Right now, I don't, I don't see the conversation started.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor?
When was the resolution from the school board sent to the city? Do you know?
I don't know the date, but it was in the News Gazette as well as, I've talked to all of them, but I don't, I don't know the exact date, Mayor, but I'm sure Dr. Owens can give you that information. They passed the resolution, as well as Champagne School Board passed the resolution and sent it to the cities.
If I, oh, Dean, yeah?
Thank you. When you say homelessness, could you define that for me? I mean, does that include lockouts, runaways, domestic problems, children in need, in need of behavioral intervention, or are you talking about homelessness and the definition of poverty?
As you're fully aware, the definition is fluid. It is very difficult, because HUD defines it differently than, say, the McKinley Vento Act does. My definition starts with overcrowding, and of course, not having a legitimate facility to reside in. That's my definition. And of course, you know, those bodies are fighting. That's part of the problem of defining homelessness. That's why it's imperative that you guys get with the other stakeholders and just talk it out and figure out how you want to address it.
So, so the definition would include just too many people and too small of a facility, not inadequate?
The National Center for Homelessness, they, they use that definition, which to me is, you know, overcrowding conditions. But HUD does not define it that way. So there's two, all these definitions running around, but I start with overcrowding. That's, that's where I start at, because it has such a negative impact on the rest of the community. People living in overcrowded conditions, we saw their grades drop, we saw them be, you know, not good citizens, and so on. So, you know, I think you can use either one of those definitions as you begin to move forward.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I'm wondering, I realize that it's always difficult to figure out and estimate the homeless population, but I'm wondering if you can give us your best estimate for the homeless K through 12 in Urbana?
I did not come prepared to bring those numbers, but I can get those numbers to you for sure. One of the problems with this, this whole homeless issue in every city in the country is coming up with clear numbers. In the Federal Register, it also indicates how difficult it is to come up with numbers, and I think we are gonna have to approach that in a different manner. Number one, we need a body to do the needs assessment. The needs assessment now is kind of haphazard, and so it's, it's a sort of a moving target. The group that you're referring to, they come, they come up with numbers, and those numbers change about as soon as they get them. So I am, I am prepared to ask the Housing Authority at a later date to change their role, because we need paid staff members doing those things as opposed to somebody doing it in an ad hoc manner. But those numbers do change, but I can certainly get whatever you want. If you want Urbana's numbers, I can get them for you. I can get them for the state. Whatever you request, ma'am, I will get them to you.
I would love to see the Urbana numbers whenever you have a chance. Thank you. I know, I know it's difficult.
It is.
I understand.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
If I may, can you, first, I do not remember seeing the resolution from the school board. I don't know if it ever got to the, was distributed to the council. If it was, if it was, I apologize for overlooking it, and if it wasn't, then I apologize on behalf of the city for not taking it seriously enough. But the, but then my question is, can you point to a city that does this better than other cities, and especially better than we do? Is there an example of a city that, that is, you know, doing, trying to do the right thing or doing the right thing?
I think right now, San Diego and Philadelphia are doing some wonderful things. What we see in California is that they're, they have approached it from the veterans' homelessness kind of issue, and we see that if you take a piece of this problem, you can more or less get your arms around it. And I'm sure your staff can benchmark it or check the best practices.
Okay.
I think it's time for us to think out of the box.
Yeah, so if we, if we research a couple, I mean, maybe we can even do it better, but if we research people who are doing it better than we are now, then that's a start.
That's a start, but as you know, all cities are kind of dealing with this, this vexing problem. I think we can address this in a different manner. I think that if you go back and look at the housing authorities, the Enabling Act in 1939, you begin to look at those, they haven't been changed since then. They're also, they're still talking about slum clearance and those kind of things. I think they need to be updated, and I think the cities need to begin to look at those and then suggest from the state legislators that they re-engineer housing authorities in the state. I sat there for 10 years, and we, I mean, it was the same old thing, but we weren't addressing city needs like we really should have. But when I started looking at this, I went to look for the resolution that created the Housing Authority in this county. Do you know they couldn't find it? I had to go to Springfield and go into the vaults and get it. So we haven't even looked at what we can do legally or not legally, because we didn't have the document. And I may be the only sitting person in Champagne County that's got the document right now. That's unacceptable. We all need to have that document. We all need to look at it, see how we can change it to expand the powers of an organization. But here is a problem. We have these community problems coming into the schools, as we know. They're not equipped to deal with them. We already have an organization that's equipped to deal with them, but they are working independent of you. Let me just clarify something for you. The housing authorities are created by state law. State law, enabling legislation. The program is created by the federal government. So we have this strange kind of setup, and mostly everybody from locally and at the state level kind of back up and say, well, you know, that's HUD. That's just not the way it is. There is an Illinois Housing Authorities Act, and it can be changed to do whatever you guys think that you want to do. My charge, I think, is to suggest these things to you, so that you look at them and then do it however you want to do it. But we cannot continue to allow something like this to grow, and that's what's, what's happening. It's starting to grow for various reasons, and by the time it gets out of control, if we allow it to metastasize, then it requires more resources, and it requires more energy, more staff, and more money to try to solve the problem. I think we can do it differently, and I'm just throwing a few things out today that I think that you can do it however you want to do it, but we need to do something to resolve this problem.
Yeah, Aaron?
So thanks, Terry, for the education, for the work that you're doing around this. As it relates to the CDBG funds, you said that they were established and supposed to be distributed to the cities and municipalities for issues like student homelessness. Was there a percentage of that funding that was supposed to be given to, for student homelessness? So in your attempt to advocate or to get some activity out of this body and the other bodies as well, the advocating against the application, the CDBG money is for more than homelessness? Or if you could further educate us about that, or me? I don't know if anybody else?
Absolutely. I think HUD is quite clear that there's no percentages per se put on cities, that you have to do 10% on streets, 10% on sidewalks, nothing like that. They more or less want you to identify what the needs are and show some linkage between your activities and those needs. The problem with, there's a breakdown there, because student homelessness hasn't even been identified. That's the problem.
But student homelessness is a part of though, you said we have to link it to, and the things that we have to link it to are things such as student homelessness and various other things. And so whatever projects we distribute that money to, it has to show how it impacts those areas.
Yes, if you prioritize your needs, then you say, if you say, for instance, student homelessness is one of your priorities, then you need to show the federal government in order to get your funding, that you're doing something in that area, or they won't fund you. You know, that's, that's kind of the way it works. But you guys have got a good record as the Champagne. Our letter will make HUD back up. They know me in the Regional Office, talked to Cunningham, talked to all of them on a pretty regular basis. They're going to look at that application, but when they get my letter, it'll make them stop and think, wait, wait a minute, what is the City of Urbana not doing? And then they'll contact staff, and staff will communicate to you that they're concerned about this issue of student homelessness. Because I'm not trying to do anything other than make sure that you address student homelessness. Now, the percentage you do that in, how you do that, that's entirely up to you. But our kids, our kids deserve your time, your energy, and your expertise. This all started when a young lady, sort of looked like the mayor, came to me and said, "You know, I keep getting in trouble, in trouble with the police, getting in trouble with school, but could you help me find a place to live before it gets too cold?" That's what you're talking about. Well, my dad and I, we live in a truck, and we go to a hotel to wash up in the morning. Come on, people. Where's your heart at? It's not by Terry. It's not about me. I hope not to be here. I hope that you, I can look back and say, okay, they're doing wonderful things to help their children. These are your kids I'm talking about. And I'm not. And I don't, and I think HUD knows that, at least when I talk with them, I ask them, what do you think specifically about student homelessness being in the consolidated plan or the action plan? Comments from HUD Central and from the region? Excellent. It's a growing problem. It should be in there. I thought after the school board sent you the resolution, that you would act, and however you choose to act, but you didn't. That's why I'm here. And I, you know what, I want to say one other thing. I can tell from your faces, two or three of you, when I said, Councilman Jacobson said, more or less said it, "You don't know about the resolution." It seemed. I, I, wow. Please accept my apology. I'm trying to stir up something, because I thought that you didn't act, and I don't want to paint you in that picture. I'm just trying my best to do something for these kids. That's what I'm doing. And I will make sure that that resolution is forthcoming. Wow.
So, if, oh, I guess I can call on myself, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Libby wants, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Since we're having some discussion here, I thought I would provide some additional information, and we did have a conversation. This is in some ways a matter of timing that we talked about, but I want to assure the council that addressing homelessness in all of its forms in Urbana-Champaign County is a prominent priority in our consolidated plan, and we're in our fourth out of five years on that plan, so it's been a priority for us, as it was in the prior plans. That's a five-year plan that we do. HUD reviews that. It's all pro forma, very strict formats that are required for the consolidated plan. Then every year, every year, it's not an application, it's called an annual action plan pursuant to the consolidated plan, where we present to the public and to the city council our plan for how to fund different, all the different programs for our CDBG and our home funds, and, and that reflects the priorities in the consolidated plan. But it's not an application. We're formula-based, and, you know, as long as there's, these programs are funded at the federal level, we're a entitlement community, and we do have a lot of goals and a lot of needs. I want to ensure, assure the council that homelessness is one of our goals, including youth homelessness. Now, in terms of the wording in our annual action plan, there was a 30-day comment period, and we had several public hearings, and our Community Development Commission reviewed a draft, and the city reviewed a draft. We had a very strict deadline from HUD in May to submit that, and we kind of got that done, you know, just on the wire there, and talked about homelessness, but not student homelessness specifically. Doesn't mean we can't address it. And Mr. Townsend and I talked just a few weeks after that submittal had happened. So we were already past our public review period, then it goes to HUD, and through the year, we have amendments, but HUD will also review it. So if they feel that we need additional language, there's a process for that to occur, but just want to assure the council that homelessness is a priority. We'll continue to have the ability, as long as we have the funds, to fund the different programs in our annual action plan, as well as in the consolidated social service plan. Our CDBG contributes a small portion to that. As far as a resolution from the school district, I have not seen that nor heard of that. We'll certainly follow up with whatever resolution and how that might have impacted the city. So I hope, also I directed Mr. Townsend to attend the meetings of the Continuum of Care and the Council of Service Providers to the homeless, and Kelly Murkowski is our representative. They meet, I think, every month, and I think we talked like the same day they were meeting, so that was, they're probably due to meet again. So those would be really important people, you know, since they're running these programs, to talk about the student needs and make sure that those are identified and, you know, any of those questions are answered, and that has representatives from the entire community, too, so.
Yeah, it should be clear, it should be really clear at this point, that when they, when they're holding those public hearings and meetings, and I think everybody's doing a wonderful job, however, that doesn't stop somebody like me coming before the council, because the council needs to know if there's something that after those public hearings, it wasn't covered, or something they need to address, and so I've it wasn't covered, or something they need to address. And so I've made a point of always informing council people of what I know. And that doesn't mean that these groups aren't doing a wonderful job. But I think tonight, it really, really makes clear that there's a resolution that was drafted by another government body that was sent here, and this council has no knowledge of it. And I don't, you know, if I had, if I just confined my comments to that group, or groups like that, you wouldn't hear this. So here, you got the school boards in one corner, not talking with you because they think that you ignored their resolution. You never got it. And that's why it's important for me to be able to address this body and bodies like this. No, you haven't addressed student homelessness in your plans. And that's why I'm here.
So I'm trying to rapidly learn about the McKinley-Vento Act online.
Well, I'm not totally not an expert.
And it appears to me that this law requires homeless students to be identified. Now, I can't tell from my quick reading of this, by who's responsibility that is, but it does require them to be identified. So I wonder if our attorney could actually research that a little bit and see, you know, which public bodies, you know, from that bill are, okay, who's, okay, who's responsible for that?
So locally, the Continuum of Care does a point-in-time survey, and that fulfills that requirement. And that, you did ask about the census, and they would be the group that does that each year and would fulfill those requirements.
So it looks to me as though the students need to be not just counted, but personally identified, so that, for example, transportation could be provided, et cetera.
And the State Board of Education is also coordinated with, so.
So that's being, that's being done, to the best of your knowledge?
Within our area, Urbana and Champaign, too.
But then the, but then it sounds as though the actual follow-up on that may not be getting done.
I do think, you know, there's never enough to go around, but there's a funnel system. We get the money, we have our plans, it funnels out to these programs. We're represented on the council. There's activities, there's reports that are provided, information that's provided, monthly meetings. So, you know, there's certainly more opportunity to find out more and get more involved. But there is a system locally that deals with this.
Well, if I may, there was, there used to be no system. There is a system in place, and they're doing wonderful things. They just miss student homelessness. They did. And resistance to change is in the form of, you know, everybody's territorial. We're all doing these wonderful things. Well, you are. But our kids are still suffering. And so I have to wait until the Continuum of Care group finishes their needs assessment, and then take a look and say, look, in your 2015-17 consolidated plan, what page is student homelessness on? Not there. The last time this body approved the action plan, did student homelessness come before you? No, it did not. It was not there. And the same thing happened with the city of Champaign. So I'm not more or less diverting from what I said to them. This is House Bill 261. It's passed in the House, the Illinois House, it's over in the Senate now, on a second reading. And I know some of your writing. I was talking to the Legislative Reference Bureau today. This didn't come from the Continuum of Care Group. This came from elected officials. So again, I hope that we don't get territorial where we're, you know, trying to justify or say all the good things you're, we're doing, and not recognize that there's some ways to improve. Because that's really what I'm after here. I'm really after us trying to address what happens to our kids that are students. It's not addressed in those, in those plans. As Libby, Ms. Tyler pointed out, no, it's not specifically addressed. She noted that. We talked about that. It's not noted. I went there and I spent two hours looking at it. When I come before you, I do my homework. You may, you don't have to agree with me. But one thing you will say, I will do my homework, and I'll be prepared to answer most questions. And those questions that I can answer, I will go back and get them. Now, tomorrow at 8:30, somebody in the school district will be over here calling you with the resolution that they passed. It was in the News Gazette. And as the issue continues to mushroom, what I would say to you is that, you know, Ms. Tyler's office is doing a wonderful job, and the Continuum of Care Group is doing a wonderful job. But there's some things that need to be added to this. And what they are, that's your call. I just want to more or less say to you, think about that. Because it's not in the plan. I've looked at them. I spent two hours here, I spent two hours in Champaign, I called HUD, I met with them, I talked with them. It's not there. And it's obviously a growing issue, because your state legislature is just starting now to pick it up. We don't want this to mushroom into a community problem, which is, you know, if it metastasizes into all kinds of other problems, then it just compounds the problems we already got. So when you're doing all these wonderful things with gun violence and all these other things, and on the other end, you got a leak somewhere that needs to be plugged. And I'm identifying that for you.
Okay, I appreciate the information that Mr. Townsend has brought to us, to our attention. It looks like there's going to be some research necessary before we can actually make any kind of thoughtful response to this. Certainly, we're going to be interested in knowing about the resolution. It's not, I wasn't aware that there was a resolution. I didn't read about it in the News Gazette either. But we're going to probably find out exactly what it said. And of course, the resolution is a suggestion to the city council for action, and we would probably want to review some of the details of the enactment of the, our action plan as it's written, and specifically concerning youth homelessness. I know that typically, we address adult homelessness, because adults are the ones who rent or purchase properties, and they're responsible for their children. So by addressing adult homelessness, we feel that we're probably addressing youth homelessness as well. But we'll find out whether that's perhaps a separate issue that might take more attention from us. And I think that probably what we could ask staff to do is do some research for us and come back in a couple of weeks or whenever it seems to be appropriate to give us more information.
Well, I want to thank all of you for your service, first of all. And thank you for your time in allowing me to address you. And again, this is not about adults. This is about students, this is about children. And the school district, all I'm going to do is act as facilitator. And I'm fully aware that these are just suggestions. You know, you're the elected officials here. It's your watch. I'm a retiree. And I think that you will all take a look at this and do the right thing. I was just bothered by the fact that the resolutions came here and there was no action. And as I addressed the school board last week, or was it this week, I can't even remember, last week, I guess, when they were saying, well, you know, we don't know why they didn't respond. Well, you guys can, it's only, what, two blocks or whatever. Go down there and talk. I mean, you know, we could get something done. Don't forget, it is not about Terry, okay? This is about a little girl or a little boy that are living in conditions that impairs their learning, impairs them as an individual, and they can very easily, if we fall into partisan politics and turf politics, we can forget what this is all about. I won't be back. My job is to make you aware that this is a growing issue because of migrants, because of public housing policies. In Chicago, people are moving in the community. We don't have enough affordable housing. And as you heard, the last part of that letter, which I'll go into much, much more at a later date, moving to work has been operational in this county since 2010. Did you know that's an experiment? They're experimenting with your constituents, and a lot of money's being spent. Is that the proper thing to do? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I don't have any more questions. I just wanted to read for everyone I just saw here on the News Gazette, 1012 of 2016. It says that the Champaign School Board discussed the possibility of signing a joint resolution with Urbana to ask the Housing Authority of Champaign County to form a community committee to study homelessness here. Both boards will vote on the resolution at their second meeting of the month, October 18th for Urbana, October 24th for Champaign. So I would imagine that if we were looking for this, it would be somewhere around that timeframe last year.
Yeah. And Councilor Emmett, one of the things that they did was, they addressed the resolution to the cities, because the cities appoint the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority. And we get in, we're back to this notion that once I appoint you, then you're an independent municipal operation. You don't get any reports from them? Nothing. And that's, you know, they, but you have the authority to suggest to the Housing Authority that they address something. And I think that's what the resolution was saying. I don't speak for the school board. Okay?
So, one other bit of research, I might ask the staff, can we get the numbers? Over the last few years, I'm really concerned about the size of the problem. I mean, of course, if it's, if it's not zero, it's too many. But I'm concerned about the size of the problem and the trend lines. Is it, is it growing?
Eric, this article said, in Champaign, it was 242 students that were considered homeless enrolled in its schools. At that time, Judy Wiggins said it was 191. In Urbana, the amount of homelessness students is continually in the upper 90s.
Okay. Thanks.
These numbers are unacceptable. And we cannot allow them just to keep going up, 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 and up. Hey, thank you. Don't trip me when I go out in the parking lot. Be nice to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Now, I have one other public input slip. Eldris Melinda Carr chooses not to address the members, but asks, but wishes to express continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision, sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. Thank you. And now, moving on to presentations, and the first presentation is from Public Arts.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Boyes, Economic Development Manager, and also the interim Public Arts Coordinator. And this is Morgan White. He's our Public Arts Intern, has been so for about a year and a half. He's done a really outstanding job for us. And Morgan, you can't hear me too well? I apologize. Morgan White, our Public Arts Intern, will be going through the 2017-2018 Urbana Public Arts Program. This was recommended to the city council by the Public Arts Commission.
Good evening. So the members of the Public Arts Commission include Pat Salmon, Barbara Hedlund, Eric Jacobson, Sarah Jones, Janelle Orcerton, Erica Cooper-Patton, Jessica Snyder, Jason Patterson, and Katie Harrell. And this is a commission that meets every second Tuesday of the month. To foster a city where all residents, emerging artists, established artists, and non-artists alike can engage in the arts, and where artists can thrive and feel valued, that is the program mission for the Urbana Public Arts Program. During the Public Arts Commission Annual Visioning Summary, this is like a very small clip it, or snippet of that, one of the questions was, what does a thriving local artist community look like? And the answers usually had something to deal with. Art is evident and integrated in the community. Community members are aware of and engaged in the arts. There are strong interactions between audiences and artists, and then artists are economically successful.
And just a side note, the commission does an annual strategic planning session. And this year, because of the turnover in the Public Arts Coordinator position, the commission spent time more looking at its mission statement and looking in a broader way, and what are they trying to affect through their work and the work of these programs? So next year, we'll probably have a more focused and deliberate strategic planning process that will focus more on the actual programs that are delivered.
The current public arts programs include the Arts Grant Program, Urbana Celebrates the Boneyard, Murals on Glass, Urbana Sculpture Project, Art at the Market, Arts in the Schools, Artists of the Corridor, Art Now, and the annual Urbana Art Expo. The Urbana Arts Program, our Arts Grant Program, is designed to help make funding available to artists, artist teams, organizations, and festivals, and encourage members of the community to pursue their artistic goals and complete their projects. In the 2016-2017 fiscal year, over $193,500 was requested, and we were able to fund 27 incredible applications. These are two projects that were funded by the 2016 Public Arts Grant. The first is called Sharing Memories: The Mirror. It's an art exhibition that presents works created by the Urbana Latino community through a series of highly collaborative and hands-on workshops. The project's goal was to provide the Latina community with a space, time, and technical resources to develop a personal language throughout the use of photography and graphic arts media. The following video is a short excerpt from the final report that was presented to the Public Arts Commission earlier this month.
(speaking Spanish)
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 The second project, completed by Matt Jaclyn, the Director of Percussion Studies at Olivet Nazarene University, titled Bringing Ghana to Urbana. The aim of his project was to give Urbana an authentic multicultural experience that targets many different audiences within Urbana, and bringing them together through sharing knowledge, engaging the arts, and making music. The following excerpt is from a video very similar to the final presentation he gave earlier this month with his final report. It features a short clip of Mr. Jaclyn playing a traditional instrument called the Gael, with prominently the most accomplished Gael artist in the world today, Mr. Bernard Woma.
one, was actually done at the Urbana Free Library. So that was a neat exhibit as well. And the mirror, which Morgan discussed, that, that project and that process of sharing and creating community art is continuing beyond this grant because of the, the success of the artists and the community members involved.
This year, the grant program received two generous $500 donations from the Center for Latino and Caribbean Studies and primary donors Katie and Leon Harrell. Urbana Celebrates the Boneyard is held as part of the Boneyard Festival by Forty North each year, which utilizes the Boneyard Creek Crossing by creating a fun inviting space with live performances, art activities for all ages, food trucks, and more. These photos feature some of the activities at this year's program, which had traditional fish painting called Kiyo Takut, walking marionettes with Anne Newman, joyful bubbles, and live performances by Bodacious String Band and Los Guapos. In its fourth cycle, Murals on Glass is an initiative that rotates with the Urbana Sculpture Project and aims to integrate public art into the Urbana environment, promote tourism and commerce, and beautify and improve the city's streetscape. Currently, we're in the process of selecting possible locations for new murals, and we'll be putting out an artist call soon.
Tentatively, we've identified the Phillips Recreation Center as one site, and we're considering possibly the municipal building here.
In the 2016 and 2017 fiscal year, five new sculptures were installed in Urbana. Horse and the Hound by Jim Collins, Three Red Houses by Andrew Arvane, Monolith by Timothy Jorgensen, A New Leaf by Don Lawler, and Keep It Together by Benjamin Pierce. There is a downloadable sculpture guide with bios and locations for many of the sculptures located throughout Urbana on the city website. And then in 2016, Stranger Reduction Zone by Timothy C. Flood was acquired by the City of Urbana Public Arts Program. Located adjacent to the south entrance of the Urbana Free Library, Stranger Reduction Zone was first bought to the community by local nonprofit Public Art League in 2014. Each time the button is pressed, an audio clip plays from a rotating bank of 30 clips representing 13 different languages. The Stranger Reduction Zone was made possible thanks to a generous donation by Jack and Jenny Waller. Art at the Market provides free arts workshops and live performances during Urbana's Market at the Square season. This year, Art at the Market will be offered from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and live performances will be held from 9:30 AM to 11:30 AM on five market Saturdays. Arts in the Schools supports arts projects in Urbana Public Schools. In 2016-2017, Capuerta Angulo Center received $1,000, and Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary received $2,000. This upcoming fifth cycle will have a similar process and offer $3,000 to be awarded to two proposals. This program provides space and marketing support for Urbana artists in the city building lobby and now the Urbana Free Library. Four artists will be presented in this upcoming fiscal year, each holding an exhibition that lasts two to three months. There are, these are a few highlights from previous Artists of the Corridor, and then, including one current one, Rusty Clevenger's third grade students at Dr. Preston L. Williams Jr. Elementary School. Airing monthly on UP TV, Channel 6, and archived online on YouTube, Art Now features interviews of local artists, their works, history, and their method. In recognition of this program, UP TV was awarded an achievement award in the short-form documentary featurette category at the 2017 Best of the Midwest Media Fest and Award Banquet in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Here is a collage of the various artists that have been featured in previous episodes. These were also used to advertise each respective episode on Smile Politely.com.
And all of the Art Now episodes are available on the Public Arts, well, is it UP TV's YouTube channel that they're featured on? So you can find all the old episodes as well.
The Urbana Art Expo, now in its third year, acts as a bridge to support and help artists connect with businesses, organizations, and patrons. In 2016 and 2017, the Urbana Art Expo had 19 local artists participate, which generated over $5,000 in sales in seven hours. These are a few images of the first and second Art Expo. This year, we hope to expand the event to two days. This year, the City of Urbana and the Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center was awarded a $50,000 grant by the National Endowment for the Arts to support Open Scene, a view of youth views in downtown Urbana. Through this partnership, the aim has been to create a plan for reclaiming the city's center through arts-based dialogues that directly incorporate the experiences of the Four weekend intensive events were held at the IMC with stakeholders and young adult participants. These events included making beats with Derek Lindsay, storytelling with Andrea Perkins, a hip-hop concert with Mother Nature, and theater with Hillel Waters and Lisa Faye. The final workshop, combined with a silent art auction featuring work by Langston Alston, sought to create community discussion regarding the future path for the IMC in downtown Urbana. Summary documentation of these events will be shared as part of the grant reporting. The public arts programs have been promoted on the city website through distribution of press releases to the media, monthly email newsletters, online ads on Smile Politely.com, social media accounts including Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Tumblr. Staff will continue to work with the City of Urbana's Marketing Coordinator, Urbana Market at the Square, and the Business, Urbana Business Association to share costs related to marketing the program online through print and radio ads. This year, the Public Arts Program also received a grant for summer youth employment by the Illinois Arts Council Agency, which will support a high school student's summer intern whose role would be to provide general administrative support to Urbana's existing arts programming, marketing, and events.
And in addition, the Urbana Art Expo raised about, I think, $1,600 this past year, so the earned revenue from that event largely supports the program expenses of the Urbana, the Art Expo itself. And lastly, included in the council packet, but here again for your review, is the programmatic expenditures for the Urbana Public Arts Program. As you can see, there's not been a lot of change in the core program expenses over the last several years, and there's really only two key changes for this fiscal year. The first is that there's $1,000 more shown for the Urbana Arts Grants Program, and the reason for that is because we received $1,000 in private donations, which were mentioned earlier in the presentation. Secondly, the other two changes are related to Murals on Glass and the Urbana Sculpture Project. Those are both biannual programs, so they alternate years, so that's why there's a change there. This is effectively a status quo budget, and there's no reduction in expenditures. However, as was reported in the mayor's budget announcement, there was a change in one source of the funding. So instead of the general fund making a contribution to the Public Arts Fund, also known as L-19 in the budget packets, the Public Arts Program will be funded from the fund balance within L-19 this coming fiscal year. And I believe that can be sustained for three to four years. It is not sustainable financially in the long term, but given the budget situation, this is one way the Public Arts Program can limit its impact on the general fund, and we have time to talk about the future of the program. We'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes, Aaron.
Well, certainly a thank you both. Nice to, to meet you, Morgan. I appreciate the presentation, and of course, I think the arts are extremely important to our cultural experience in, in the City of Urbana. I was wondering, how did you, how do you, how does this program make money to have a surplus?
It doesn't really make money to have a surplus. It's the, the general fund and other sources of funding, grants, donations over the years have been contributed to L-19. And there might have even been, I mean, I haven't been with the city the whole time that the fund's there, so I don't know the full fiscal history of it, but it's always had a fund balance in the time I've been here. Normally, I think it's customary to maintain something of a fund balance, but yeah, I'm not, it, just over, over the years, it's accumulated. It's only approximately $60,000 to $70,000, so it's not very substantial.
So maybe I misunderstood what you had here. What you seem to have presented today was, would be about a, was that a $68,000, $65,000?
The, the fund is paid for through, from a variety, or the, the whole program is paid through for, from a combination of tax increment financing, financing funds and public arts funds, but L-19 doesn't have its own revenue source. So aside from earned revenue and grant revenue, the only other revenue that comes to the program besides TIF is the general fund contribution. And this year, the general fund is not contributing to, to that fund. Instead, we're utilizing fund balance.
And so to get to the point, the general fund, the contribution, you're saying that you, this program would be able to run and run at the same budget basically that it has for maybe two or three years, but at that point, we would definitely have to make sure that we funded from the general fund?
Or make an adjustment otherwise, and that's a conversation that can be had on an ongoing basis.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. All right, thank you.
Are there other questions? Yeah, Bill?
So I think you took that down by having, I think the really good values are definitely the arts intern and get our money's worth out of Brandon. Yeah, Morgan, okay, sorry. And Brandon, but. And I like the Murals on Glass and Sculpture because I can see them, but a lot, a big part of this is like performance things that I often don't get to. So is that $3,000 for marketing all you have to spend on kind of letting people know what's going on and, and when and where they are and how to appreciate the programs that are out there?
Some of the program budgets include marketing, so I believe Art at the Market and the Art Expo are inclusive of some of their own marketing, but yeah, overall, that 3,000 is primarily what we use for, for general marketing expenses.
Okay, and then, so this $65,000 plus the, the Public Arts Coordinator salary would be the total public arts expenditures?
That's correct.
What percentage of that comes from the TIF funds? Do you know offhand?
Well, I, I believe there's about $135,000 that comes from TIF and $15,000 that comes from, from the general fund normally.
So when you say that it's sustainable for a few years, you're saying that that 10% to 12% of the program that's funded out of general fund is sustainable for a few years?
From the, from the fund balance of L-19, yes.
Okay. And for the funds coming from the TIF going to, say, the grants programs, does that put any constraints on what kind of grants you can fund as far as what they have to do in order to be allowed to use those TIF funds?
We limit the locations of where those events take place, and yeah, we want them to promote the arts within, within the downtown, and the downtown has a place where arts and creativity and arts entrepreneurs thrive.
I know there's been a lot of discussion about sort of a arts district on the campus side. How does that impact if you want to do something in that so-called arts district? How could you do that if, if they have to have a performance in the TIF districts?
We would, we would have to identify another funding source for a major initiative outside of the downtown area. I mean, that's, that, that's a major limit of the, of the way the Public Arts Program is set up right now, is it has to be by its nature of its funding source very focused on the downtown area.
Okay, yeah, I just, I think over the past couple of years, there seems to have been at least some effort to start to try to identify more general fund, funding for the public arts rather than taking it from TIF, and I'd like to see that continue as, whenever we can.
Yes, Ian?
One of the goals, I believe when the Arts Commission or the Arts Program was set up, was to have a pretty active fundraising arm or collaborate with other organizations in the community, and, and, and that hasn't really taken off yet. So, well, we collaborate with Forty North and, and other organizations, but the fundraising portion of this really hasn't taken off, so, so that would be another option.
Other, maybe I might just actually more of a suggestion than a question, or maybe a question. We're currently in the process of recruiting a new coordinator. Is there a chance that we will be able to get somebody who, in addition to their other qualities, has really a good track record as a fundraiser? Is that, is that in the cards?
I would just say we have an extremely talented applicant pool for the Public Arts Coordinator position, and fundraising skills are among the many skills we're seeing amongst these highly qualified candidates.
Wow, what a great answer, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Moving right along, we're also ready for a presentation from the library.
Thank you for your time this evening. Really excited to talk with you tonight about the budget, the proposed budget from the library board for the Urbana Free Library. This is one of our wonderful programs where kids get to read to dogs, they also get to read to horses. The library is a place that fosters the love of reading and interacting with community members, whether they are four-legged pups or not. Currently, we have over 12,300 cardholders. Last year, over 31,800 people came downtown to attend over 800 different programs. So that is a lot of people coming to the downtown area, which promotes business and activity downtown, which we all like to see. Over 837,000 items were checked out last year. And this year, over 45,500 people have used the public computers to write resumes, do research, and connect with loved ones so far. Overall, over 390,000 people visited the library last year in total. As we look at the library's budget, you see one line that stands out quite a bit, which is the tax levy. Over 80% of recurring expenses for the library come from the tax levy, and everything else are just smaller pieces. So when the state talks about potentially freezing the tax levy, you can see that it could have a profound impact on how the library provides service. There are a couple of different pressures. There's a federal pressure as well. There is an initiative in the budget for fiscal 18 to defund the Institute of Museum and Library Services. Now, the museum of library, sorry, Museum and Library Services sends LSTA funds, which are library technology funds that come through, and they end up paying for interlibrary loan delivery through the libraries. So it's important, as we consider what's happening at the state level, to look at the federal level as well, because depending on what happens with those LSTA and the Institute Museum of Library Services funds, that could have an impact on us, because of course, interlibrary loan is very important to us, including the delivery we do back and forth daily with the Champagne Public Library to provide service. We also have a beautiful building that is just about 100 years old, and then there's a 1975 part and the 2005 part. The library has done a very good job of taking care of its aging infrastructure. It's been very well maintained, but 40-year-old boilers don't last forever on a 20-year lifespan. So thank you very much for the funds the City Council put aside last year. We are currently this far away from installing the new boiler. We've updated the software system that runs the heating and cooling, and we already know that we will be expecting some savings in our heating and cooling costs because we'll be able to set back the temperature at night, which wasn't happening with the old broken system. So HVAC and other expensive needs are in the library's five-year financial plan, but it's only recently that funds have been set aside so that as we look to the future with expensive infrastructure costs, that the library will be budgeting to be able to pay for those. We are very pleased to announce that although there was a $210,000 request of the City Council to fund additional work to replace the chiller, which is working at 50%, and to look at either working on the 1910 historic windows to make them more energy efficient, the foundation, the Urbana Free Library Foundation Board voted last week to fund the replacement of the chiller themselves at the cost of $153,514. So we are absolutely thrilled that the foundation has been so successful in its fundraising. So we are absolutely thrilled that the foundation has been so successful in its fundraising and good in its stewardship. They like to work on the things that are more extra on top of normal operations, but they appreciate the funding that the city provided this year to replace the boiler and work on other HVAC issues, and they said they would replace the chiller. Now, it's possible that with the ESCO service coming through so we can see what our energy efficiencies might be, that perhaps the chiller won't cost as much. We'll see how that goes, but they have made that commitment, and we are absolutely thrilled and grateful to the generosity of our community, which has given their funds to the foundation, which has then made this pledge to us. If you look at the fiscal 18 expenses, of course, the largest part is going to be wages and centralized staff expenses with benefits, because of course, we're a service industry, and we have fabulous staff, which I know you all know, because I see you there. Non-staff expenses, including the cafe costs, are 22 percent of our expenditures. Total material spending is 11 percent, and then we do try to put money aside for fund balance. It's a little bit lower this year, because we are going to be spending some of the fund balance to move some of these projects ahead. If you compare this year's expenditures, anticipated expenditures to the past couple of years, you can see 911,000 for the non-staff expenses. That includes the chiller and some other capital expenses. We're going to be spending more in materials. We're looking to increase material spending so we can buy more for our community to check out or download guitars, et cetera. That's a 17 percent increase in material spending, and our generous friends at the library raised between 17 and $20,000 a year, and we're attempting to spend what they earn for us every year. So, on top of what you see here, we're expecting another 20, 17 to 20,000 dollars. So Elizabeth talked about the fund balance, and the mayor talked about the fund balance at the city. We look at our fund balance as well, and if you look at our general fund in May, the taxes come in in June for us, so in June, our fund balance looks really big and wonderful. But the money that we get in June actually helps take us through to the next June. A more accurate look at where the library sits is looking at the general fund balance, for the fund balance in June. So, it was much larger in January of 2012, and given some expensive projects, including RFID, it went down to just $77,000 in, in, these are January, sorry, 2013, and then it's $66,000. They shot, they say January, but they shot up in May, but we've been working hard to build it up, so at the end of this fiscal year, we should have a fund balance of $227,000, and that includes things like 11-year accrual funds, which is a payroll function, putting aside $40,000 almost for capital expenses in the future, putting aside $26,000 for future expenses with our IT systems. And then, the city had transferred funds to us to hire a development professional this year, which we haven't done yet, so we're setting that aside to hire that person next year. So, even with a budget that actually, tax-wise, the tax levy, we have, we're only just $10,000 more than we had in 1314's fiscal year. So, given increasing prices and other factors, we have done a fabulous job working with what we have had available, and our staff are so creative and wonderful. We have started new collections this year with their creativity and with some grant funds as well from generous donors. So, we launched a musical instrument collection. We check out guitars and amplifiers. Ukuleles are on their way. We have a hands-on science collection with telescopes, microscopes, globes of Venus, Mars, and other places, models of the human heart, eye, brain, and jaw. And then we now have hands-on children's science kits, is one. I have a couple samples if people want to take a look at them later. We also circulate video games. In in-house, we have tablets, Chromebooks, and PCs, I'm sorry, laptops to check out within the building, so people can be where they want to be in the library and use the Wi-Fi. We've also started an English conversation group for our new language learners. That's going to start on June this year. We're working with the New Americans Welcome Center and other groups to make sure people know about this. And then we have been open, as long as Urbana, and by Urbana has been happening, we've been participating in that on First Friday nights to get more people downtown, and within our current budget, we've been open late every Friday night, sorry, every first Friday night from six to eight on the First Fridays. So, we've been excited to be part of that opportunity to get more people down, down, encourage economic development, interest in what's happening in our city. Also, in the upper right-hand corner, we've got a celebration of the Chinook Collection, which we took responsibility for at the end of last fiscal year. We go to Read at the Market when it's indoors and outdoors, and we are at the food truck rallies as well. So, your library staff are all over all the time, reaching out to the community, as well as being in the library when people come into the library to see us there. And I passed out handouts last week. The summer reading program just started. We're very excited. We, I believe, hundreds of people in on Saturday, signing up and attending programs. There are kids playing chess, kids looking at art exhibits, kids seeing capoeira demonstrations and participating. It's a fun, exciting place to be, and we appreciate your consideration of our budget request.
Any questions or comments? Aaron?
Thank you again for your presentation and all the work that you guys are doing at the library. Certainly is a wonderful space, and it's really good to hear that the foundation is going to bring, you know, raise the funds or to pay for the chiller. That's very helpful for all of us here in the City of Urbana. I also heard you mention something about chess. Is there a chess program or chess tournament or anything like that at the library?
There's, chess happens on Saturdays in the afternoon. There's a group of kids that come in and play chess. I'll be happy to send you some information.
I'm just interested in also maybe doing some sort of tournament there. There's a lot of buzz around chess, so I think the first time that I participated in a chess tournament here was at the library in Champaign many, many, many years ago. So, I'd like to see something like that in Urbana if we can, and I'd love to work with you on that.
All right, I'll give you a call. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or, yes, Mayor?
I just wanted to thank everyone who has contributed to the library. It's truly, it's a labor of love between the foundation, the board, friends of the library, and then there's another unsung group of volunteers who maintain landscaping, flower boxes, the plantings at the library. So there's a tremendous amount of volunteer and community support for this building, so thank you for your leadership and stewardship on this. Thank you.
Yes, Dennis?
And I'm an avid attendee of the foundation's book sales, which occur, I don't know, every couple of months, and the books that are donated to that become available for purchase at a very reasonable price, and you see, you know, hundreds of people lining up to get in on the first couple of days. You have to go early to get the best deals, but you can always walk away with something, and sometimes I walk away with too much.
The friends would be very happy you said that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. This was so pleasant and great, and we're, everything, all items that we deal with aren't always such, so thank you. And now, we're ready for staff report. Are there, are there staff reports that are appropriate at this time? Yes, Mayor?
Just a couple of quick things. One, I wanted to let the public know that over the past week, we, Elizabeth, Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan and I held seven meetings for employees to give a budget briefing, and a total of about 120 people attended these meetings, which is equivalent to about half the workforce of Urbana. So we had a very good showing of that, and the briefing was recorded, so, and it's on Urbana Public Television YouTube, so anyone can access, access that and watch. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Sergeant Matt Rivers of the Urbana Police Department. He has written and published a book on the history of the Urbana Police Department from 1855 to 1976. It's a really good read. There was a, we, there's a story about it on the city's website, and there will be copies of this book available at the Urbana Free Library, and of course, it's available for sale. So anyway, congratulations to Sergeant Rivers for a, a really very, very nice history. And department, I'm going to be starting visiting various departments in the city, beginning this week with Public Works. So on Thursday and Friday, I'll be out at the Public Works site, and a reminder that there is no council meeting next week. It's the fifth Monday. And it's the Memorial Day weekend, but we wouldn't have a meeting.
Okay, thank you. Other, other staffers, okay. So, yes, Aaron?
I have had several people approach me about the budget hearing that, and presentation that we had last Monday, and was questioning whether or not we would have something similar again before we actually voted on the budget. So, I don't know if we do that, is there, if there will be another opportunity for us to like really go through all of that before we actually vote on it?
Next Tuesday, or on June 5th, Elizabeth will be giving a more in-depth presentation on the long-term issues with the budget, and then we'll also have a public hearing at that point. So that's an opportunity for the public to attend, and there will be time for discussion as well. And then June 12th is the Committee of the Whole Meeting, at which point the budget resolution or the budget ordinance will be considered. There will be time for discussion at that point, and then the ordinance would be voted on on June 19th.
Okay. Any other staff input or? Okay, now, we, now, the next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number 2017-05-023, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, 2201 Philo Road, and this is from Public Works.
Good evening. I'm Vince Gustafson, the Public Facilities Manager. I'm here with Fire Chief Brian Nydlinger to recommend approval of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, 2201 Philo Road. As you can see in the aerial view here, this is the vacant lot directly adjacent to and south of the existing Fire Station Number Two on Philo Road, just south of Mumford. Fire Station Number Two was built in 1969. It is currently in need of some updating to meet the modern needs of the fire department. We are anticipating a recommendation for expansion of this facility in our future planning efforts. We feel that it is in a good, in a good location now to serve the southeast district long-term, and it'd be a good investment in the future.
Okay, the graphic you see in front of you is a map of the city, and Captain Brian Husker from the Fire Department created this map to further divide up the home fire life safety areas between the fire companies. And this map has a lot of uses. If you look at the circles, the farthest, the red dots are current fire stations. The three dots that are in line with each other are the three Urbana stations. The dot to the west or to your left is the university's fire station, which we staff. The circles represent a mile and a half response area, and that's an ISO requirement to get maximum points for an engine company response. As you can see, Fire Station Two in the bottom, when you look at the mile and a half circle, it pretty much encompasses the, the needed area for service. So with this representation, we feel that Fire Station Two, long-term, is in a good location to serve that area.
Negotiations resulted in a final price of $38,000 for the lot, and upon approval, we will be able to go to close on the property within 30 days. At this point, we'll take any questions.
Questions? Aaron?
I'll wait.
Okay, and did I see you, Jared, or you?
Yeah, I was just going to ask where the extra $3,000 that's being transferred from the general fund was going to go? The asking was 38,000, but it says a budget amount of transferring 41,000 from the general fund?
The, we, the budget transfer was made prior to the final negotiation, so I'm unsure the, where that money will go. Imagine it'll stay in that line for right now.
I believe that our Finance Director has the answer to that question.
So, so the difference is $3,000. We could either keep it in the general fund and not transfer it after all, but I guess I would suggest, since the amount is small, we'll just go ahead and do the full transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund, where it'll be used on some important project.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Bill?
So, on that map with the circles, I noticed that that was like straight-line miles as a bird flies. Is that how I S O rates a mile and a half, or is it like road distance?
Yeah, actually, it's road miles, but for the purposes that this map was made for, HFLS, we went ahead and swung those circles to be able to allocate who, who did, inspected what homes and installed smoke detectors. It's interesting, when you look at where the three stations are located, that they kind of line up with, you know, the original part of the town or the older sections of town. And, and yeah, they, I know ladder trucks are dedicated for two and a half miles, but engines for a mile and a half. And, and I know we have the ability to do road miles, and I think as we further get into the study, I would expect that the consultant we hired, you know, would do that as far as road miles.
Yeah, it's, it's not that hard to set up with the GIS we have to do the road miles or drive time either one, so.
Right, and, and we do have maps created with what's our actual road miles. They're kind of jagged looking.
Okay, yeah, just, okay. I hope we don't have to pay a consultant a whole lot of money to do that, because I don't think it's that hard to do.
No, I would think the geometry would be pretty simple. It's trigonometry. Yes, Aaron?
First of all, who would be, who, is it the consultant who determines the cost, the negotiations over the cost of the lot? Who, who actually does that?
Uh, we, we hired a appraiser to do an independent appraisal of the property, and we received an appraised value of $35,000. The asking price from the seller was $41,000, and we negotiated to 38.
Okay, and to the $3,000 extra, I certainly love you guys, and I think you should get that and much more, but if the cost is 38,000, then I would support the transfer being $38,000.
Other, other questions? Yes, Dean?
Just out of curiosity, has there been any thought given to a small substation within that building for the police, for like report writing or something to locate a car down south?
That will be part of our facilities planning efforts, which we hope to get underway next fiscal year. Analyze the space needs of all the departments within the city, and if it could be incorporated into that expansion of the facility down there, that in a logical way that made sense to everyone, then it's a possibility, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to plant that seed. I wasn't sure if it was talked about anymore, but there have been apartments in the past that have offered it, and it's just never materialized.
I know there was proposed, um, maybe 10 years ago, where the police could use the substations for after-hours report writing. I think the issue was with the officers coming in night when the guys were sleeping upstairs. It was a little bit disruptive, so they never really followed through. But in the future design of that, maybe we could incorporate some office space separate from the living quarters, where we could make that a part of that design.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes? Oh, yes, Bill? Bill, yeah.
One more comment on the amount of money being transferred. There are other costs of closing besides the purchase price, so I really would prefer that it stay at the $41,000 transfer. There's title searches and fees and possibly property taxes. Legal usually figures that out, so it may be, in fact, more than the price when you get into all the closing costs.
Yes, Dennis?
And one of the incredible savings of this purchase is that we don't require a demolition.
Any other, okay, so I entertain a motion relative to this ordinance?
Yeah, I'll make one. I recommend that cities, that the Committee of the Whole approve ordinance number 2017-05-023, authorizing a purchase of certain real estate, 2201 Philo Road. For the committee, I'd make that motion.
Thinking.
Okay. Okay. Any amendments for discussion? Okay, hearing none. I believe that in Committee of the Whole, we can do this by a voice vote? Well, technically, the, the motion should be to send this to council with a recommendation.
And I'll, and then it should've been, yes, that's right, that's something that's always true. So, I, I make that amendment to my motion, that this be sent to the City Council, City Council with recommendation approval.
Okay, mover, and I assume the secondor accepts that.
I accept that friendly amendment of his own motion.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Now, uh, the next item is Presentation of the Annual Capital Improvement Plan and Resolution Number 2017-05-038R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan. And this is, again, from Public Works.
Okay, good evening. What the first two introductions, to my right is Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer, Vince Gustafson Facility Manager, and then Craig Schonkwaler is, again, Assistant City Engineer. Craig's involved in the transportation side of engineering, and Brad is involved with the drainage and development side. And really, for the first time, this is, we've brought Vince to the table, we've added a facility planning component to the capital improvement plan, so we'll talk about that a little bit tonight, and I'm sure he, along with Brad and Craig, can answer any more detailed questions you might have. So, we'll get started, hopefully we'll keep this under 20 minutes. If there are questions that come up during the presentation, I'll stop, but if you can hold them to the end, that'd be great. The outline for tonight is going to be basically a brief background of capital improvement planning. We're gonna talk about, celebrate, if you will, some recently completed projects that we've done. We'll also talk about this fiscal year, projects that are in progress, not gonna be completed within this fiscal year timeframe. And then, what you're probably interested in is what projects will be occurring in FY18. And when we say 18, we mean 17, 18, but we say FY18, then FY19, and then our list of unfunded projects. It's not necessarily all-inclusive, but there's lots of projects that come to our attention, and they're just simply unfunded. Quick background, this has been a planning document we've been using since the eighties. There's a lot of detail in this screen book, and I might add that if you have more questions than tonight, you certainly can email us, call us. If you're not comfortable with moving on a resolution of supporting this plan, we can have another meeting in the next, you know, week, two weeks ahead, but tonight is what we thought would be our actual presentation. The first capital improvement plan was adopted in 88, so this has been going on, this is probably the 30th plan, actually. So, the adopting ordinance, so noted, and we cover a five-year window. It's our best, um, projections for projects that we see with the funding that we believe would be available to us in the various funds. And speaking of various funds, there are several funds, and not to be confusing, but, for example, we have a sewer benefit tax. This is, again, paid by every resident that has property in Urbana, where your discharge of your home sewage is based on your water consumption use. We also have a stormwater utility fund. This is fairly recent, in the last five years, it's a tax or a fee based on the amount of impervious area that you have in your property. State motor fuel tax, you pay at the pump when you buy gasoline. Local motor fuel tax, similarly, we've implemented now for several years. And then last is the Capital Replacement Improvement Fund. This one, keep in mind, the CRNI is from funds generated from the general fund. And if you looked at your budget book, you'll see that the general fund has lots of various funding sources in and of itself. But each year, we have a transfer of dollars from the general fund, which go into what's called the Capital Replacement Improvement Fund. TIF money, we've used a lot of TIF money to do projects through the years, no different coming up. We've got two TIF districts that are very active, number two and four, and we're now beginning to fund or establish the central TIF district, which is kind of a combination of the old TIF one, TIF two. Block grant money is sometimes available for Public Works projects, so those dollars are diminishing. We'll talk about some block grant opportunities in a little bit. And then, last but not least, is the Motor Vehicle Parking System Fund. Whether you buy a permit for quarterly parking, or you feed the meters, this is that fund, and that funds some projects too, we'll talk about in a minute. What are our challenges? Our challenges are no different than any community and village in the United States, and it's basically aging infrastructure. The American Society of Civil Engineers have rated all the infrastructure in America like at a grade of D+, roads are a D. Just kinda gives you the idea that we're all struggling, this is not just something unique to Urbana. We've not had any increase in funding in motor fuel taxes, and I mean state motor fuel taxes. It's been flat for almost 20 years, $1 million a year. I don't think I have to tell you that the cost for concrete and asphalt has gone up in 20 years, but that's a challenge that Craig's group has faced with. Increased regulations adds costs. Not that they're all bad, in fact, many are very good. A classic good example is having the ADA Accessibility, Accessible Disability Act? Is that what it's called? And anyway, when we do intersections, each corner can cost $20,000, $10,000, just to do one corner. You've got four corners, $40,000, $50,000 to upgrade an intersection. We didn't necessarily have those costs 20 or 30 years ago. Yes, we need to do those things, but you need to know that that's an extra cost in doing roadwork that chews into that million dollars that we receive in state motor fuel taxes. Then lastly, we're fiscally constrained. So, in other words, we try to keep each of these funds with a positive cash balance. You may see in a couple cases where we're negative, but we never overspend necessarily, but it's just to be demonstrated that we're tight in some areas. So, what projects have we completed that we get excited about and we're happy about? We did about three miles of oil and chip roadwork this past year, that's the local motor fuel tax. I'm not gonna give you time to read all those streets, but if you wanna know more details, a lot of that is in the maps that we have in the back here. Resurfacing hot mixed asphalt is HMA, that's the lingo we use, but resurfacing projects, we did several streets there. Local motor fuel tax and general fund money funded that project. We did a lot of concrete patching work last year, in fact, we had two parts, but the main roads that we did were Florida in the vicinity of Philo Road, Philo, and then Race Street metal down the south of Florida. We also did some other smaller areas, but they still added up to $240,000. Again, general funds did the funding for this work. Sewer repairs, it gets in the Brad's area, sewer benefit tax. We have lots of repairs, lining, point repairs, rehabilitation work. This is necessary to do every year to allow full capacity of our sewers, whether we're using it for sanitary or for storm sewer work. This is, in this case, sanitary sewer work. Springfield Avenue, we had a situation where we had some homes demolished, we had some opportunities potentially for new apartments. This is over by McCullough area, and we extended the public sewer. There was a private service line that was in disrepair, serving multiple lots. We don't want service lines serving more than one lot, so we extended a sewer in this particular location. Sewer benefit tax paid for this. The stormwater utility, this was an effort where we upgraded a detention basin that serves not only for fairly estates, but also a large diameter storm sewer. There's a lot of erosion work going on, we used a new product out here, and if you have time to go by here in Florida Avenue, just by Lerman Avenue, or west of Smith Road. Crystal Lake sediment, we talked to this council, previous council, just a few months ago. We partnered with the Park District, all that sediment has removed, been removed, and is drying out in our landfill, and we're hopeful that's a lot of that removed sediment can stay in the landfill, although some of it may be contaminated to a level that may have to go to a Danville landfill, but right now, it's lying just east of our Landscape Recycling Center, and drying out, except for rainy days. Cunningham Avenue sidewalk, actually, we had two sidewalks. This is the wider side, the east side, between Country Club Road and Kenyon. On the west side is a five-foot walk. We talked about an extension of this walk here recently, and you'll see a picture of that location in a little bit. Brad also did some repairs on some bridges, sidewalk and curb and gutter and pavement work over the Boneyard. Kinda, concrete sidewalk repairs at these locations, particularly close to the Leo School area, but there is work done at those locations. We talked about chillers tonight. We too had a chiller project that was replaced on top of the Fire Department area. This was Vince's project, we got it done in time. We then did the roof project too, on this same location. So, this chills maybe two-thirds of this building structure. Floor covering, this room, second floor, basement tile, carpeting and tile work was done, it was in really need to be replaced, so we were able to do that, and hopefully in the years ahead, we can get to more of the office projects, individual office, where the carpet is, is getting pretty worn. Talked about roofs, not only this building, Fire Station Two and Three, and also Public Works, so Vince is becoming more of a roof expert here, with all these different projects and shapes and sizes. All right, what's in progress? Well, Lincoln Avenue, a lot of dirt work is going on now, large diameter culverts, we're probably three-quarters of the way done with the earth dirt work, and we'll be lime-stabilizing that dirt soon, and hopefully pouring new pavement up there. This is that mile extension up to Olympian Drive, so, so far, it's been going pretty well. Could use a little bit less rain, but it's going pretty nicely. Craig has a big project just south of the slide I just showed you, and this is Killarney, up to the north end, which is close to Saline Court, super value, lots of trucks, 20%, 30% of the traffic is truck traffic up there. We've got the waste transfer station, couple contractor facilities, so heavy, heavy usage of a project. If you didn't hear, on the media, sport, various broadcasts, radio, TV, Green Street is really closed in Urbana now, between Goodwin and Wright, so the contractor is full bore, hitting that stretch in front of the Union. It's a $9 million project. And the various funding sources, Tiger is the name for the federal funds, Mass Transit District, the university, and our state motor fuel taxes is what's funding this $9 million project. It's a two-year project, it won't get done until next year. Vine Street resurfacing, if I heard this once, I've heard this more than once. We are gonna get to it this fall. Craig's working on a project along with another street, local motor fuel tax will do the million resurfacing here. Airport Road, today, again, Craig's a busy guy, this road is starting up this week, right? So, we've got TIF money, TIF four, and we have Economic Development Program money from IDOT, and a very small percent, but every amount helps is TARP, which is Truck Access Road Program, it's an IDOT funding project, so just means that the pavement will be beefy enough to take on heavier trucks. So, this is something we're excited about when it's done. Three-lane concrete street, we'll load a 45, upgrade the signals a little bit, go a little bit east of 45, we talked about it before. Frasca's worked with us, we're parking stormwater on their property, got easements from them, some utility work is going on, so hopefully by this fall, we're gonna be able to open up, but it's gonna be tight because of the staging of the work, we have to have access to particularly Frasca employees. Brad, stormwater utility, we have contract cleaning too, we do it in-house, we also augment it with our stormwater fees. Televising cleaning's very important, and then that's information they take to do point repairs, lining, and things of that sort. Ped master plan, Brad's working on this project, again, general fund is funding it. We don't have a ped master plan, this is part of the BPAC, Pedestrian, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. We're getting more into the pedestrian side besides the bicycle side of, of planning. Bicycle wayfinding, this is Craig's project, working with Regional Plan Commission staff, and we've just gotten this started. Hopefully, you'll see signs, something like this in our community, to be wayfinding, to tell our bicyclists, pedestrians and vehicles too, how far things are, various locations. Right now, we're doing brick sidewalk repair, and that's Brad's job and his people, and there's a list of locations. Mostly, more or less point areas, not main blocks, but still lots of brick work being done ongoing. And for new council members, it wasn't many years ago, we didn't really do much brick work at all, so it's been a fairly new aspect of infrastructure that we had neglected for many years, that we're now addressing. LED lighting. Council member, or City Clerk Smythe was quoted in the paper here, but this project is gonna get underway in early June, we're excited about it. Motor vehicle parking system money is using it. I have told Elizabeth Hanon that this is like a linear parking lot, that's why NVPS is helping to fund it here, but quite frankly, we don't have other dollars available. So, the stretch we're doing is around Crainer, Center for the Forming Arts, we still do have two more streets we need to do that are unfunded, and that's Nevada and Matthews. Those lights and the poles look similar to these poles that are, need to be replaced, older than 50 years old. This is a project that Bruce Coverley and Mike Bronk have talked about, you saw the presentation by the architect students, this is across the street from Black Dog. We're waiting for it to dry out a little bit, we're waiting on some of the final work that the architect students are doing, but hopefully, in the weeks ahead, this area of Griggs and Broadway will be transformed. Fire Station, this is Vince's project. The firefighters have been very patient for upgrading the restrooms there, showers, facilities, toilets, et cetera. Architect fees, there's some demolition costs, although Public Works is gonna do some of the demolition to save money. We're gonna be going out for bids, and hopefully we'll get prices to fit well within our budget, but general fund is funding this project. All right, now, what's gonna happen in next fiscal year, starting July 1st? Lincoln Avenue, more Lincoln Avenue, this is between University and Green, it's a rough stretch of street. State motor fuel tax money is the funding source, and one design component that Craig and others will be working on is how to more safely have bicyclists cross at main streets. So, stay tuned for more discussions on that, but for the most part, this is for next year. Springfield, also, at the intersection, east and west of Lincoln, will be addressed, local motor fuel tax. Race Street, Washington, California, again, state motor fuel tax. Cunningham Avenue, we just talked about this not too long ago, our 20% share is $185,000, we're using TIF money for this. Again, it'll be a kind of a wide sidewalk all the way up to Napleton Way, similar to the photo you saw a little bit ago, between Kenyon and Country Club Road, Perkins. Here's a situation at St. Matthew's Church, that they have a real, real long lateral, it's in somewhat disrepair, it causes them problems. Sewer benefit tax, one of the goals is to provide sanitary sewers to the property itself, and in this case here, my, here we go, we really, here's a public sewer, and here's a public sewer, really don't have anything serving their lot, per se. So, Brad's engineers are gonna be looking at a way to extend a sewer to better serve this church, so that's a project we have going on. All right, this is Vince's project, and the mayor has already mentioned in her present in her budget message, we want to begin tackling facility planning, so this is programs needs and facility assessment, management, master planning. We'll call it a Phase One, and we'll see what we can do within this first amount of dollars, and then we'll be going on to Phase Two as we get further into this, but it's a picture of this facility, but we also have Public Works and, and Fire Stations and such too to be looked at. And something that was mentioned earlier, actually by Celeste, is in early June, we're gonna be hopefully getting some proposals back on energy service contracts, and there might be some opportunities to look at upgrading our facilities, at least when it comes to energy and water usage, that might roll into this to some degree. We're gonna be improving the exhaust system at the fire stations. We're going to be replacing hot water heater and HVAC at Station Two, which you saw the photo, the lot next door to the south, same fire station, Vince will be involved with this work. FY19. Okay, Amcor, Project Five, the fifth of five projects. This is probably 2019 construction, hopefully it'll be done in one calendar year, depending if we get this all ready to go. Craig is gonna have a lot of work with lots of easements along this stretch, that may be a wild card in the timing of this, but it's a $3 million project. That may be a wild card in the timing of this, but it's a $3 million project. And again, MTD and the UFI and state motor fuel taxes received from the city will take care of it. We're looking at Race Street going west, and it'll be all the way to Bucie. Vine Street resurfacing, Washington to California, and also Washington east and west of Vine Street. Fairlon Drive near Urbana Middle School is in need of repair. We need to do a stormwater master plan. Our current stormwater master plan is from 1980. This is an example of what happens when we have a lot of surcharging going on and water spills out of a manhole. But we figure that this may be a quarter million dollars of stormwater utility fund. Unfunded projects. This list is in the Green CIP toward the back of the memo. But I wanted you to see that, and this is not all inclusive, but this is some of the major projects that we really don't have an identified funding source for. But for example, Goose Alley reconstruction is something by the Courier behind Pizza Am, et cetera. That alley could use some work, upgrade the drainage, lighting, and spiff it up a little bit to make it more inviting. So we could probably talk five minutes on each of these projects, but these are all, have lots of strong interest. As we go through the list here. Downtown Boneyard Creek improvements, segments one, two, four, and five. That's from the original HNTB Wank study. That's the estimate, $6 million. I know we'd like to do Boneyard Creek work west of downtown to campus, but we have to kind of look at what are the priorities? Do we want to try to work on downtown, use TIF funding, stormwater funding, or what versus going further west? Before we get into questions, and thank you for listening, take your time and go through. There's lots of information back here. If you really like to know about sidewalks, there's locations that talk about where we have sidewalks, where we don't have sidewalks. How will we ever fill in those areas that don't have sidewalks? How will that be funded? Right here, you know, we talked about $75,000 give or take each year to take care of brick sidewalks. Maybe $100,000 to do repairs on concrete sidewalks. Folks, that doesn't go real far. But that's the dollars allocated to deal with those things. Sometimes we let two or three years of work accumulate, dollars accumulate, and do a one larger brick or one larger concrete sidewalk. We've done that sometimes. And you get a little bit better economy of scale that way, more square feet of this or that, and sometimes gives you a lower unit price. Or it may just be that the availability of staff to put these projects together too. As far as funding, I've received questions tonight and in the past is, well, my street doesn't have a sidewalk. It doesn't have street lighting. How can I have those projects move forward, particularly in local streets? City council, some of the past have put together a cost sharing program for those things, and they vary a little bit, but I could provide that information. But there's usually a public benefit portion. It could be 40 percent, 50 percent, 60 percent, depending on the type of project. But the other balance comes from the property owners. And it usually is done via special service area, which is basically a way of spreading the cost for the homeowner over a 10-year period of time. It can be on the property tax bill, depending on who you're, how you file your taxes, whatever. Sometimes that can be tax deductible if you itemize your property taxes. We have not done a lot of special services, special service area assessments, and primarily because there may be two or three people that really want to do a sidewalk on an area. We'll talk about the costs for each property owner. But when the other property owners hear about the cost, they say, ah, I'm not interested. And usually we need, you know, more than 51 percent of the people that are in favor of a project. Otherwise, your decision is kind of tough if 51 percent want a project and 49 percent don't want a project. So we like to see 60 or percent or higher, or two thirds, one third, to give you a comfort level that yes, we think a majority of the people in an area want to do an assessment. But that's usually how those things are done, unless we have block grant money. And I will have to say that in those neighborhoods, historically, where we have had community development block grant money, and Libby's staff works with our engineering staff, and that's how we've been able to do some projects. Roads, sidewalk, lighting, at no cost to the benefiting property owner because in theory, well, not in theory, because those are folks with lower income, and that's where we've not done those sorts of assessments. But just to let you know, that's real quick how those things have happened. What have I forgotten? Anything? Okay, so we're happy to answer questions you might have. And there's a lot here, and if you're not comfortable moving this forward, we can schedule more meeting or touch on some areas that you'd like more information on.
Questions? Yes, Dennis?
So Bill, you know that the East Urbana Neighborhood Association's always been real keen to maintain the brick sidewalks that we do have. And as part of the brick sidewalk, I guess you'd call repairs district that has been codified by, I don't know, since 1996 or something like that. And I appreciate the work that's been done in the East Urbana neighborhood. There are brick sidewalks though that fall outside of this outlined district for repair work. And they continue to deteriorate or disappear by overgrowth. What can be done to maintain the brick sidewalks which are not within the drawn district?
Well, hopefully our brick master plan, brick sidewalk master plan has all bricks identified. But maybe there's some areas missing. So I would say, first of all, let us know those locations. Brad will then prioritize those with other brick sidewalk areas that need repair. But back when we did the master planning for brick sidewalks, we thought we had covered all areas. And there are certain locations that are what are called major brick sidewalk areas. We want to try to preserve those areas. But there's some locations where the people want the brick removed and replaced in concrete, and we've done that too. So I would just say simply always send myself or Brad Bennett the location. We'll investigate it. We'll add it to the list. And hopefully in the next construction season or two, we would be able to address some of those areas. But correct, what is going on right now with the current contract does not include, unfortunately, all the brick sidewalks that are in disrepair. In fact, creatively, we dug out the brick sidewalk across the street here, which was buried under grass, and salvaged those bricks. Because those bricks are different than the street papers. Okay, not to mix and match here though. But we needed to harvest those so that we have a good supply of bricks for sidewalks.
All right, I'll probably contact you then.
That's fine.
Further, yes.
So I had a question about the sidewalks.
Yes.
And so I'm looking over on the 2018 construction projected. I'm wondering if you can walk me through a little bit. So I see that there's basically, there's two different types of sidewalks, right? The brick and the concrete. And so the East Urbana and the West Urbana neighborhoods look to be in the highlighted area for brick replacement, or brick, I'm sorry, repairs. And then over there by Silver on, close to Philo, is an area for the concrete sidewalk repairs. So my question is this. I assume that you guys go through and you kind of evaluate the state of the sidewalks within those areas, and then figure out what needs to be fixed. And so it looks to me, since I'm new on the board, it looks to me like you probably earmark different areas each year. Is that correct for evaluation and?
Well, the answer is on the concrete sidewalks. We had a sidewalk inventory that was done by the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. And as part of that sidewalk inventory, they assess the physical condition as well as the ADA compliance of all the sidewalks in Urbana. And they've also did some prioritization of areas that we should focus on, you know, for sidewalk improvements. So we're trying to target the areas that they identified, you know, which was primarily based on, you know, the age of the population, the percentage of the population with disabilities. So we're trying to target those areas. But honestly, on the concrete sidewalk, we used all, basically all the money this year to address what we call accommodation requests. So if a disabled individual or, you know, relative or an advocate for a disabled person contacts us with a request, you know, to improve the sidewalk or the sidewalk ramps, you know, in their neighborhood, that's a number one priority for us. And that's, you know, where almost all the money went this year was to address those requests and bring those curb ramps up to ADA compliance. On the brick sidewalks, we do look at, you know, kind of spreading the money between the different districts. I mean, we actually literally go out and walk the sidewalks to assess the condition with a can of spray paint and mark it. We also get plenty of input from the residents. They'll come out and actually give us suggestions. If you go down two blocks and walk over, there's a really, you know, trip hazard. And I'll point out with the brick sidewalks, usually what we do is we send our own operations crews out on anything that's an immediate trip hazard. They pull those bricks out and put in the crushed red granite materials, kind of a rock material. It's kind of a temporary fix, and then we're working to come back and put in a permanent fix, which is to actually, you know, remove and relay all the bricks.
So I understand we have a limited amount of funds that we can allocate to all of this stuff. But I'm curious, at what level is there some kind of damage to a sidewalk in which you go in? It's not in these areas that have been earmarked, and you say, okay, we have to fix this. For example, I'm not sure what happened, but outside of my house, there was, somebody in the city came by and put a little asphalt down a couple of years ago. And I'm assuming it had something to do with somebody being able to access it with a wheelchair. I didn't call the city. It just kind of happened. So my question to you is, how do you prioritize those? How do you rank those in terms of what needs to be fixed that year and what can wait?
Well, okay, so the accommodation requests are number one. And then after that, we're, you know, using the sidewalk inventory as far as the priority areas. They've targeted some geographic areas, so that's kind of the next, you know, level. And in the past, what we've done is literally kept a running list of sidewalk complaints that people have called in and then addressed those as we had funds or staff available to be able to address those.
When someone brings a trip hazard, for example, to our attention, we're going to do a remedial repair very quickly. So if you saw some asphalt or material like that, that was in a way to try to bridge that trip hazard, if you will. So, and I will add that our own public works crews do concrete sidewalk repairs also. So they augment what we do by contract also.
So all the stuff that has been allocated here is by contract? Is that correct?
Correct. Everything in here that we talked about is contract. But also operations crews can and do concrete sidewalk and concrete street patching work.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Further, yes, Bill?
Yeah, I think I've said before that this is one of those reports I like to carry to council meetings with me and refer to a lot, and it's one of the ones that I refer to a lot when constituents ask questions. So thanks again for a great report, very informative, and giving us some, you know, some idea of what's going to happen for the next five years. So I compared a couple of kind of projects I'm looking forward to to make sure that they weren't moved off another year. And they weren't. So the one that was scheduled for 2021 is still in 2021, even though we're going out to 2022 now. So that was encouraging. I was wondering if you could just tell us if there was anything in particular that you had to delay or remove?
Yeah, I can answer that question. Yeah, this was actually the first year that we had some stabilization in our five-year plan. The previous year or two, we had large commitments to the MCOR project, which kind of threw things out of whack. Actually, everything is still funded within that five-year plan. We've actually added a couple of streets, Pennsylvania, west of Orchard, over to Race. We've added that one in there, and as well as Orchard just north of there up to Michigan. So finally, after doing this for a while, we were able to get some stabilization. A lot of times, we have to react to increased cost or a bidding climate or something like that, and we have to shift funds, which then, within the cash flow, it'll have a ripple effect through the whole five-year plan. So this was really a good year overall for planning wise.
Okay, thanks. That's good news. Then also I had a question about how we determine how much general fund transfer goes into the CRNI. I noticed that's, well, it's back down to, I guess, what was close to normal. It seemed like normal might have been a million dollars, but then it went up for a while, and now it's back down to 700 something. Is part of a, part of a sales tax allocated to that?
So last year, when the city council approved some financial policies, we included in there a policy that established a baseline for that transfer. And we included some language that said that that would increase annually by the increase in the construction cost index. So it would grow with, as their costs increase. The base amount, I'm doing this off the top of my head, is around 700,000 currently. Last year, there was probably about 1.8 million in additional transfers that was just done on a one-time basis to fund various projects.
It was an election year. That helps. I think, yeah, that answers some of my questions. Thanks a lot.
Further, I might add one other comment that we didn't list specifically. But Craig will be working to secure proposals to do a street network system analysis and to augment the work that he does to try to come up with, if our citywide, we have a certain condition or a certain rating of our streets, what does it take to maybe bring that rating up to a little bit higher? What does it take to not let our streets get into continued worse condition than they are? I know the mayor had asked this a couple of meetings ago of, well, what, where, should we be funding our streets and bridges in the community? So we don't have that answer tonight, but this is something that we're going to be sending out a request for proposal on. There are several consultants that do this sort of work and communities that have this sort of information available. So we want to have that answer too. But just to tell you, an answer I gave a council in 2005 on a similar question, and this was back when we were having discussions with Champaign County over fringe road funding. I had done some really quick calculations, and in our arterial collector streets, our busier streets, the amount of funding that was going toward those streets in 2005, and it's gotten worse, meant that we could get to those streets every 60 years, and our local streets for every 90 years. I think we all know that a local street doesn't last 90 years or a major arterial street. So that's, that's kind of the challenge that's before us here. Hopefully we'll have better information in the, you know, weeks and months ahead. But we, I can't urge enough that we do need more motor fuel tax funding or some kind of funding source nationally. This is a problem. And I think even for general funding purposes, please keep us at least 700,000 or higher. And we need to grow that in some fashion. So that's another challenge that we have before us, is we get questions on streets. And we'd love to address them, but we are just constrained by the resources we have.
Aaron? Yeah, thanks for the presentation and all of the information. I know it's a lot to try to get done. I appreciate that Lincoln Avenue, University to Green Street was discussed. I hear a lot about that. I bounced my way up and down it also on back and forth to work. But you said it's going to be, this proposal would get it done in 2018? And it would be from University to Green Street?
Yeah, that's correct. Well, actually, it bundles Springfield Avenue also in that package with, from Gregory, just basically one block west and two block east to Kohler. Our in-house crews have performed the topographic surveys. Or actually, they're wrapping it up right now on Springfield, but yeah, that's our plan.
Okay. The MCOR project, I've heard tons about it. I'm still not completely sure about the federal money that's tied to that. Is there, are there federal dollars tied to that?
Yeah, you know, the overall project's a 40-some million dollar project. Yeah, you know, the overall project's a 40-some million dollar project, and that includes all five projects, two are in Urbana. Of that, about 15 million or so is the tiger, and then the balance would be the local share. Right now, it's all front-loaded because there's time requirements for the expenditure of the tiger funds. So particularly in Project One, and then Two and Three in Champaign, that's where all the tiger funds go. And then when we do Project Five, now we're doing the balance with local funds.
Okay. So because it's in phases, does that mean that the Phase Five basically does not have, what, what you referring to is the tiger fund, or, or the federal funds? And it would just be local funds, right?
Yeah. Well, well, you know, when the funding was received, it was allocated as a proportion of each project. But then there's timeline requirements for expenditure of the funds. So all those individual pieces were moved to the front.
So the goals for the projects and things like that, participation goals and things like that, they would be a part of the, each phase of this project?
That's correct. And those goals, because it's a state-led project, there are goals that are defined by the Illinois Department of Transportation. And what they do is they look at each individual project, and particularly on the MCOR, there's like a certain percentage. So that has to go to what they call MBE or DBE, so it's basically a minority-owned business. And that work has to be divvied out of the total package. Those goals are not defined by city staff. They're defined by the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Okay. But for, do we make, what sort of input do we have in that process?
We have zero. We have none.
We just have our money in it?
We have our money. Yeah.
Unless you happen to know a state legislator.
Right.
Know an ex-one, too. So what, now the other, as council member will ask about the contracts that we have for our projects, do we have goals for those projects?
No.
Why not?
We have not established that.
So really, you know,
We have EO requirements. I mean, every contractor has to get HRC, Human Relations Commission has to approve. So, but this is something, I know we've had discussions with the HRO officer, and at this juncture, we don't have any specific stated goals per se, but every contractor has to be EO-approved. I mean, that, that's been a requirement for many, many years.
And I might say, with our current process, it looks at the workforce statistics. Whereas a goal-based system is about ownership of the contractor, or the, the company. So what that means is you could have a minority-owned company, but they could pull people from the hall. And there, that doesn't necessarily reflect, you know, the workforce statistics that Urbana wants. The commission, the HR commission, actually goes through a detailed analysis. So they'll approve somebody for, say, a six-month, or a year, or two-month. And Alex can, and Vassilia can explain that more. But that's what they look at. They actually look at more detail than what, say, for instance, the Department of Transportation does.
So the concern that I have in relationship to this, that especially now that we're talking budgets, and we're talking about an issue that has been raised repeatedly, especially by me, I don't understand why we don't have some sort of targeted goals for the projects that we control, right? Whether it's minority participation as owners, or the, and the workforce, is what I've been saying over and over again. Minority participation, owners and the workforce. 20% is usually the going rate for everyone around this area, state, federal projects. And so I don't understand why we can't implement that as well. Because on one hand, I'm, I'm told that, as you said, Alex and Vassilia can give me more of the details, but then HR is not a part of, I get a little confused about exactly what the role HR has in all this. If the department heads are, are making the decisions, then the department heads should be proposing the, the, the goals on the project, and then we either ratify them or put them forth. Some, I don't know exactly what that process would be, but to not have them as a part of the, the presentation of what we're going to do with these projects is troubling for me.
All I can tell you is that I know Alex started the process. I don't know where it's at. We had worked with them a little bit with that. And that's where that assignment was. So.
Mayor?
I can tell you, there's, there's, in the last few months, there's been interest in a, more on a county-level basis of an inclusive, developing an inclusive procurement policy, and one that is with the various cities coordinating, so everyone has similar policies. And we, that's one of the things that I want to be looking at as we develop a purchasing policy and procurement policy. So also, the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, a couple of the new members on the board are going to be very interested in that as well. So we'll, we'll be doing it.
And I, I appreciate any sort of consolidated efforts or anything like that. I just, I guess I don't understand what is stopping Public Works from saying that on these projects, that we're going to spend however many millions of dollars on each one of these projects, we, we want these particular goals. And I don't understand what's stopping us from doing that.
Well, I, I would think at this point, I mean, it would require more study. I'll give you an example of a percentage goal would be the MCOR project, which, you know, we talked about the DOT set the goal. That project's, you know, an expensive project, and they have a 3% goal. And that's, I'd say typically roadway projects, three to eight. Flat work, or, or vertical work, I mean, coming up with buildings, you'll see 15 to 20. The U of I uses that number a lot, because there's different pieces of the puzzle that can make that 15 to 20. In roadways, it's a little bit less. I mean, meaning that there's not as many different pieces as, say, you know, you don't have drywall plasterers, you don't have these different trade groups involved. But I think as far as goals, if the Public Works Department was to set a goal, it would just be an arbitrary goal, meaning that there needs to be some type of education and understanding and, you know, and really diving into it. And that's really not in our purveyance to do that. I mean, we could name a 20% goal, and then maybe it, it's not even close. Because I can tell you on the MCOR project, when I heard there was 3%, I have to tell you, we, me and Bill, we called the person at DOT and said, how did you arrive at this? Walk us through this. And they have their formulas and the way that they look at it. That is really something beyond what we have the capabilities to do. But certainly, if council wants to pursue a goal-based arena, we could follow those leads and, and do that. But I think we'd have to pair that up with Alex's group.
Well, I appreciate that, and I can understand that there's some nuances, and it's, it's easier, for instance, for vertical-based type of building and stuff, and there's so many different trades involved. That makes sense to me. Over the years of doing this, these projects, you said, maybe back into the 80s, we're talking about identifying particular projects. Then over the years, an accumulation, a list of different MWBEs that are available, could be at the fingertips of the Public Works Department. And that would help assist in establishing any particular goals, or something like that, even if it was just a suggestion from you guys. But I don't know if I've heard even that there's a list of MWBEs that you guys have, that you've accumulated over the years, that you could offer as a, as part of the, the process to come up with a goal.
Well, our, any MBE, we, we follow the DOT's guidelines. So they would be registered with the DOT. We also have local ones, for instance, like, you know, Patrick Thompson with VEA, we understand. You know, we try to work with those individual companies, too. But I think perhaps if that's something that council wants to pursue, we would have to study it. And, and I think the thing is, if you would do a program, you want to do a, a well-run program, right? I mean, you don't want to set something up that maybe you think you're going to head down one path, and you actually go down another, right? I think Champaign, is my understanding, is looking at some goal-based, too. And I think that's where Alex was doing some work, you know, on that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Further, yes, Jared?
So I just got a question, maybe for the mayor, or whomever could inform me. What does our approval of this resolution approving the plan mean as far as our commitment with these projects to our budget?
Go ahead.
Basically, it's a resolution that says that we're, you know, approving this document, the budget document itself, which is this book, has projects in FY18, you know, listed in here. So really, the actual dollars assigned to projects is, is here. The plan itself that you're giving us for, yes, we think you're on the right path for the next five years, what should be done. That's what that resolution basically says. So it's not necessarily the actual dollars. The budget is the actual dollars. This is just our methodology, our assessment, our evaluation of what we're recommending over the next five fiscal years in the 10 or 12 funds that we talked about.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Further questions, comments? Okay.
I'm sorry, I did have one more.
Yes, Aaron?
The firehouse repairs, you said, would come from the general fund. Right? Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, there's a, which?
The, the showers that I saw that were dripping and leaking and stuff when we walked through there?
Yes.
And so for you guys, the procurement, or when you're putting stuff out for bids, this is not an in-house project, right?
Correct. No, it is not.
So what is the trigger amount for RFPs for you?
Well, again, we're not doing RFPs. We're doing a sealed bid. So we have a bid opening for this particular project. So contractors need to get the plans and specifications, look at them, review them, and then submit a sealed bid.
Okay. So what's the difference between a sealed bid and a RFP?
Sealed bids are usually backed by a bid bond that, that says that we guarantee that our price is going to be our price. We're not going to walk away and lose 5 or 10% of what we bid. And it's a closed bidding situation that we open at a certain time. And a low bidder that's responsible and responsive is who we typically would award it to. RFPs are a little bit different from the standpoint of it's not necessarily something where there's a bid bond involved. Quite frankly, most of public works bidding is not an RFP. And maybe not to confuse things further, but I mentioned the word RFP earlier, that Craig would be looking at selecting the consultants. We use request for proposals to look for professional services, whether legal services, engineering services, accounting services, wherever they might be. And that request for proposal that we look for hiring professional services is usually a selection based on the best qualifications, not on price.
So I guess my understanding from RFP is that you also consider the low bidder?
No, we don't. For RFPs, we go by qualification-based selection.
Okay. And so this sealed bid process, what do you do to ensure that you have a diverse pool of people who are, who bid on these projects?
We always advertise in the news gazette. We also send emails out to contractors, such as like a VEA, what have you. Any and all contractors that are minorities that, that we're aware of will certainly include that, but there quite honestly aren't that many in, in, in this kind of work, in the concrete, not concrete, but street work. But we usually notify even contractors and let them know via email or what have you. But it's the advertisement in the newspaper is, is our, is our means of doing that.
So, Bill, you've been doing this for a long time. Do you, when you see projects like this, and you've mentioned VEA, Craig has mentioned VEA, because that is the one African-American-owned company that we all know of, but I'm sure there are other people who do this kind of work. The process that you guys have been using thus far, has it resulted over the years in a diverse pool of candidates?
As far as I know, those contractors that do the sort of work that we do in Public Works are aware of it. Okay? So I guess the answer is yes. If there are contractors, minority, or whatever, that don't know anything about these projects that we're asking to seek bids on, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. I don't know if I understand what your answer is to that question.
What I'm saying is, when we advertise for a brick sidewalk, for a concrete street, and asphalt resurfacing, I'm not aware of any minority contractors in Champaign-Urbana that aren't getting the information available to be able to bid and respond on those projects.
But my question is, is it a diverse pool when you do that? And I think that's a pretty, like, yes or no?
I guess I don't know how you define the word diverse.
Other than, I would say, African-American, Latino, Asian, Indian, someone other than...
I would say generally, the answer is no. We don't really see that much of a diverse pool. I mean, I'll just tell you, asphalt resurfacing work, there's two contractors, cross and open road, that's it.
Well, I'm talking about things like this bathroom repair. I'm not talking about...
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I, I understand, I understood from the beginning what you were saying about that. I'm just saying even things like this, when you start talking about sealed bids, that to me suggests that there's a process. Typically, what I see is people say, we put it in the news gazette, we put it here, and we, and, you know, whoever responds, responds. And typically, that means those who have been getting the money for years respond, and they keep getting the opportunities. And if we don't actually expand that process and do work outside of the box, then how do we actually get more diverse candidates, people outside of those who have typically gotten all of the, the process? That's why I was asking about it.
I don't have that answer, and I think it's worthy of a future discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Further, Dean?
I want to thank you for always upholding high standards with your contractors, whether it be the sealed bids or the other form that you talked about. And I don't think that it's, I don't expect you to create minority contractors where they don't exist.
Well, I just feel compelled to respond then. I think that you all do a great job of high standards. But if we have goals in this city to make sure that our workforce, and that the contract opportunities and everything else reflect the demographics of the community, then it is incumbent upon the department heads and the departments, this council, the mayor, to make sure that we do go outside of our way to create opportunities for people of color to have access to the programs and the things that our tax dollars create. So thank you very much.
Further comments, questions? I would certainly entertain a motion relative to this resolution. Yes, Davis?
Sure. All right. Well, we've had a good conversation about the proposed five-year plan. And we know that the funding for it is determined year by year by the city budget. So I'd make a recommendation that the annual capital improvement plan, Resolution Number 2017-05-03-R, Resolution Approving the Capital Improvement Plan for 2017, be forwarded to the city council with approval. Second?
So Charlie, is that the right motion? Does this have to go to full council? Okay. So I, any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes have it.
In closing, I would just, excuse me, make one comment again. There is a lot of information here to digest. If you'd like to spend some time with any one of us to get into more detail, brick sidewalks, streets, what have you, we're available to meet with you. But, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, the meeting is adjourned. Yes, go, everybody go home, or go out drinking, or whatever.